So our first is Mamunda Amead. Mamunda Amead, you hear? Will be followed by Cynthia Sweet, followed by Daniel Dorsett. Good morning.
Good morning Chairman Federal Glover and good morning to all the other supervisors. Is this the public comment time because?
Yes.
It is, okay. Because we're reading the agenda of the Friday.
On issues not on the agenda.
Pardon me?
This is on issues that are not on the agenda.
I see, okay. This is regarding the expansion of the West County Jail?
This is the time, yes.
This is the time, okay.
Not on today's agenda.
Okay. First of all, I've been a resident of Contra Costa County now for more than 20 years. I live in Concord, kind of behind Cal State East Bay. And I'm basically able to find myself as a fiscal conservative. And one of the things that I recently read in a study is that there's no more than about 15% of Contra Costa County citizens who actually approve of the jail expansion. And this was based on independent study of quite a number of county residents. And I happen to be part of the 85% that are opposed to the expansion because it makes no sense to me fiscally, for one thing. And I understand that Martinez Jail is being closed and those beds will be moved over to West County. But so many of the beds are taken up by people that can't afford bail. And it seems that if we could resolve that problem, we would not have to expand the jail. And here's my concern. $95 million is what I've read as an estimate, which includes federal, state, and the county funds to build the jail and as well as the $95 million and another $5 million per year for maintenance salaries and so on. The rest of the residents of the county are being neglected when we spend this kind of money for a jail expansion where the real problem is get the bail people that can't pay bail, resolve that problem as part of this. I would like to see, for instance, if we're also concerned about money that ICE is bringing into the county. I have a totally different suggestion, maybe it's been proposed, maybe it's in the works, I don't know. But I would like, I've been over to the county airport a number of times with my three and a half year old grandson who loves the planes. And my husband is in aerospace background and one of the key scientists on the building the Hubble Space Telescope, so we love all that stuff. It's a very unattractive airport. Imagine if we didn't have to go to Oakland, we could have an airport here and bring in businesses as well and support the economy that much more effectively.
Thank you.
Thank you, my time is up.
Okay, our next Cynthia. Cynthia Sweet. Followed by Daniel Dorsett.
Good morning. I'm a longtime constituent of Contra Costa County in opposition to the jail expansion at the West County Detention Facility. I do not think our state and county funds should be used to construct this new jail for the following reasons. One, 75% of Contra Costa County's inmate population is pre-trial and the state is currently writing legislature to reform the bail system to reduce this pre-trial inmate population. It doesn't make sense for our county to make a major investment in jail cells now. Contra Costa County cannot afford to spend $25 million on matching construction costs and over $5 million each year to staff and maintain a new facility. Three, the jail expansion won approval on the basis of expanding mental health support services to those already incarcerated. But only 17% of the new facility will be used for re-entry and other services, whereas 83% will be solely for detention. This is not going to solve the problem of lack of mental health services in our county jails or community. Experience shows that prevention and re-entry services outside the jail are the most cost-effective and successful method of keeping people out of jail. Five, instead, our county funds are desperately needed for prevention, mental health, health care, job training, affordable housing, and re-entry services to prevent new and further incarceration. Please fund these services instead. Do not consider this a vote against Sheriff Livingston, consider it a vote for our community. Please vote against the jail expansion and use the money to fund our community services. Thank you.
Daniel will be followed by Cora Young. Suzanne Llewellyn.
Thank you for having me. My name is Daniel Dorsett. It's interesting that we had the foster care program here. My kids were almost put into that system because we are missing too much stuff that's going on with the county offices. I don't know if you guys have an issue between the state government and the local government, but a lot of, I've seen, there's a lot of nepotism, the collusion, people are actually calling county offices and getting favors done. These kids, my kids, were almost put into a foster care system. Forty-six times the police were contacted. All for what? Because the local government and the state governments are not working together. So I contacted the state government, the Republican Party, and they told me Contra Costa County has the worst issues with these things going on. So I make this vow today that I'm gonna do everything possible to get the county and the state to work together for the well-being of the children. The issue of the foster care should be identified through a mandated counseling program. If mother and father can't get it together, then there should be some kind of counseling program that's being put in place. So I'm starting today here to talk to you that we have a serious issue going on, not only in the schools, but within homes. There is more domestic violence calls than ever right now. And if we don't put a stop to this, then it's gonna discontinue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Suzanne, followed by Cora Young. And Reverend Leslie.
Thank you very much. I'm a citizen of Walnut Creek and I'm a faith leader in my church. And I am here to express my opposition as a member of the 85% who feel that investing in a jail expansion is definitely the wrong way to go. I look at our budget in terms of the lifespan of our people. And with $100, we can prevent 10, 20, 30, even 100 times more than it would cost to incarcerate a person later in their life. So I really want to emphasize, as a person who has worked in the field of public health and prevention, is really the only sound investment we can have. I understand that all of you are concerned and have a heart for the people who are already incarcerated and suffering from mental health illness. But a closer reading of the proposal suggests that only about 32 people with extreme mental illness are going to really benefit from that money that is being invested in that facility. So, you know, it costs us to incarcerate, we could easily remove the people who are non-violent, suffering from mental health, divert them into community programs, use the money from that to help those who have the extreme mental health. So I really urge you to look at these issues in terms of how we can save our young people's lives from going into the pipeline towards foster care or crime. And we can do that with so much less money than it takes to incarcerate people later. So please, I ask you, listen to your constituents. We are asking you, begging you, please, don't invest in this jail expansion. Thank you.
Thank you. Cora. And again, Cora will be followed by Reverend Leslie and Gabriel Holland.
Good morning Chairman Glover, members of the board. My name is Cora Young and I'm the new field representative for Congressman Mike Thompson in Contra Costa County. I just wanted to take a minute to drop by and introduce myself. I've left my cards with your clerk, so please don't hesitate to contact me or our office if we can ever be of assistance. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you so very much for being here on behalf of the congressman. And we look forward to working with you up in the district here because there's so many things that I know that I'm working with the congressman on. And so we're really looking forward to meeting with you and understanding the platform that I think we formed together. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm the Reverend Leslie Takahashi and I serve as the lead minister of the Mount Diablo Unitarian Universalist Church, a congregation of 537 members that span the county. And I want to speak here today first to thank you for your service on all of our behalf as our supervisors and also to speak against the jail expansion. I am concerned, and we are concerned, that 20% of the existing beds in our jail are used for a contract with the Immigration and Customs Enforcement. We regret and understand from Sheriff Livingston that these funds that are generated through that contract are essential to his staffing needs. But we also believe that the staffing needs of the sheriff's office should be funded in other ways. Using an ICE contract to fund staff is using the incarceration of human beings as a profit center for our county, and we are sure that that is not a value that most of our citizens agree with. I also want to bring to note that we are concerned that in your application, you reported that there was no significant opposition to the jail expansion. That a coalition representing people of color in our county, residents from the community most affected, and faith leaders from around our county should be considered insignificant is something that we respectfully ask that you reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking of Gabriel Holland with SEIU, speaking of insignificant opposition, candidate for Governor Veragosa came out against the jail. SEIU State Council came out against the jail. UHW came out against the jail. 2015 came out against the jail. The Contra Costa Democratic Party came out against the jail. 10 to 1 came out against the jail. The City of El Cerrito came out against the jail. When are you gonna pay attention to the voters? We did a poll, and I'm happy to share it with you, that shows that a majority of voters in all of your districts oppose the jail, especially your, I'd love to show it to you because your district, it's actually, it's in the 30s for support and in close to 50% against in your district. So I look forward to showing you the results of that poll. And in terms of collaboration with ICE, which is what you are doing, there's over 60% opposition in all of Contra Costa County to collaboration with ICE. What's happened between when you did that vote and now, and why are so many people opposing it? Because the president has taken unprecedented steps in our country. And I just gotta say, you are in lockstep with the president with the approach that you're taking. And Republicans may agree with you, but Democrats really don't. And that's the part that I just want to drive home because when we start looking at where Democrats are on this question, which I think most of you are, the numbers get a mop bigger. And actually, ironically, over 90% of the voters would rather see you spend money on youth services than on jails. Over 90%. So if you want to flaunt the will of the voters and go forward with Trump's agenda, because I gotta tell you, that's how people view what you're doing. So be it. And you can face the voters with Trump tagged on you and this jail tagged on you, so be it. And maybe we'll just have to do a recall.
Thank you. Jerry, Jerry Emberg. Jerry Emberg, excuse me.
That's your voter.
Excuse me. Thank you. We will not have any more of that type of interruption. I will not allow that that take place here. If it happens again, we will discontinue the meeting. So thank you. Let's be respectful to one another. Jerry?
Hi. I'm Jerry Emberg from unincorporated San Pablo, and this is my first time speaking at a Board of Supervisors meeting. Thank you for hearing our comments. I'm here today because I'm very, very concerned about the proposed jail expansion for many reasons. One of them is that the county hospital in my area closed not long ago due to lack of funds, and now I hear that the county's prepared to spend $22 million a year, $22 million plus $5 million a year for 10 years for a jail expansion. And I can't quite wrap my head around increasing the size of the jail when services are so desperately needed elsewhere in the county, including services to keep people out of jail in the first place. It doesn't seem like the best use of county funds. I've heard the main reason for many, that many people support the jail expansion is because of increased mental health care. But I read the proposal and it said that there are only two mental health positions in the proposed budget, one for psychiatrists and one for clinicians. With this minimal increase in staff combined with research showing that the best way to decrease recidivism is through diversion programs, claims I've heard about the increased mental health care reducing recidivism in the county seem exaggerated. I've called many offices within the county to learn more about how mental health care is currently delivered at the jail and was surprised to learn how few people at the sheriff's office, supervisors' offices, behavioral health, know anything about this. Increasing mental health services are referred to in the broadest of terms in these discussions. If we really want to improve mental health care at the jails, it seems to me that we should become more familiar with how it is currently being handled and see how it can be improved with the funds that we have now or with a modest investment before spending, I don't know, is it $150 million eventually on it? I also don't understand the logic of expanding the jail at a time when bail reform is being considered in California on state and local levels. I've heard that over 70% of people in our jails are awaiting trial. If bail reform is passed, this number will go down significantly and the need for a larger jail could be eliminated. So it doesn't seem like this is a good time to expand the jails. And if I can just conclude with a question, are you guys, have you guys decided already about the jail expansion vote? Are you still thinking about it? And also, would you be willing to vote against the sheriff if you thought it was in the best interest of your constituents? Thank you.
Courtney Wiley. Courtney, and she'll be followed by Mrs. Guillory with ACE. Is Courtney here?
First, I would like to say that it is such an honor to be here on today. I am Courtney Wiley. I go, I attend to Leadership Public Schools down in Richmond, California. And I am against this jail expansion. Reasons because personally, in my life, there has been people in my family who has mental health issues and there are incarcerated, incarcerated right now. And building a new jail down in Point Richmond is not the answer to me. What I researched was that there are more people down in the Martinez Jail who has mental health issues more than there is in the hospitals. And why build a new jail, why build a new jail rather than a hospital? Or if you don't want to build a hospital, why not more services for teens like me? I don't get home until five o'clock in the evening and the only community center that's open till after five is the one further from where I currently stay at. And I don't, I take bus. So I would really like if there could be some more community services that are like for teens closer to where I live at. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Guillory with ACE. She not here? Guillory? Carol Johnson, followed by Trish Gonzalez, followed by Cecilia Lucas.
So hello to all the Board of Supervisors. Thank you and thank you everybody for coming. So this sign is actually self-explanatory. These are the things that our money should be going towards and for children in the community. So we see that when we spend money in these areas, then crime does go down. There's statistics and facts that prove it and studies that prove all of this. And this country incarcerates more people than a lot of other Western countries and we are not safer because of it. So we know that mass incarceration does not work. And it just, it just shows that you, that hopefully you'll reconsider your approval of the jail expansion. And I have to say, Federal Glover, it was interesting to see you coming and making sure that you were front and center for the photo ops, but I heard the comment that you made previously that if West County can profit from the jail expansion, then why not do it? So that's completely contradictory.
Well, ma'am, please, don't twist my words. That was never said.
This is public comment, so again, hopefully you'll reconsider.
Okay, well, you have the privilege of your three minutes, but don't put me in a lie. Thank you, have a seat. Carol Johnson.
That was Carol, that was Carol.
Oh, okay. Trish Gonzalez, followed by Cecilia Lucas, followed by, go ahead.
Good morning. My name's Trish Gonzalez. I'm a registered nurse. I'm here on behalf of the community that I serve. I'm a patient advocate, I'm a healthcare activist, and I'm opposed to your West County jail expansion. This money needs to be spent by providing mental health services for this community and not by incarcerating those who need care. One in four, one in four people in Contra Costa County that are incarcerated are, or one in six, I'm sorry, are in desperate need of mental health services. They have serious mental health issues that are not being met. Hospitals are the place for people who are mentally ill. If they're a danger to themselves or someone else or need care, they belong in a hospital, not in jail. But this money could be spent by training those to intervene on behalf of these people and recognize that they're not, they're not criminals, they're in need of care. Healthcare, not jails. Let's invest in, in our community and our people instead of incarcerating them. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecilia, and she will be followed by Eduardo Martinez.
Good morning. My name is Cecilia Lucas. I'm a faculty member at UC Berkeley, resident of Richmond, also have family in Brentwood. And a human being, and I'm feeling really emotional right now because I think it gets forgotten a lot that we are talking about human beings. I used to also work in a jail in Boston. And I can tell you from both my work as a researcher and from my personal experience, both working in a jail and being in intimate relationships still today with people who have been incarcerated, that jails do not help mental health. They harm mental health and are inherently inhumane. You started today, today's entire meeting, with a pledge for liberty and justice for all. Expanding jails goes directly against that pledge. For those of you who voted for the expansion already because you're aware of the overcrowding and of the very inhumane conditions of these spaces, I do applaud that instinct, but have to emphasize that it is a misguided action. If you actually care about public safety and about the well-being of our community members in this county, please stop wasting money on a broken system and invest it in the real services outside of jail, the healthcare, the affordable housing, the quality education. Deal with the overcrowding by releasing people. As was pointed out, the vast majority of people held are not a threat to anyone. Many have not even been convicted of a crime but can't afford bail. Jails destroy lives and communities, and the vast majority of the people impacted by this destruction are those who are already the most marginalized members of our communities. And they are members of our communities. This is a racial justice issue and a class issue and a humanity issue. Listen to the residents of this county who care enough about this that we have been taking time off work and traveling here to speak on this. Our priority is not jail expansion, it is services, not cells. It would be criminal to continue investing in these systems that harm people. That would be the criminal decision. Invest in things that enhance life.
Thank you.
Please practice what you preach.
Eduardo Martinez.
Good morning.
Good morning Chair and Supervisors. Eduardo Martinez, Richmond City Council member, the council that voted unanimously against the jail expansion. Last night at an East Bay Sanctuary Covenant Board meeting, we discussed the relationship between our budget and our programs. We recognized that our programs define our vision and our values. Our board is composed of dreamers and pragmatists. But for me, my left leg is a dreamer and my right leg is a pragmatist. When my left leg steps into the future, my right leg follows to keep me from falling. But if the right pragmatic leg steps backwards into the old way of conducting business, I will fall. We have studies and polls to show that the jail expansion is a step backward. With this project, we will fail as a compassionate and just society. I would argue that the jail expansion is not even a pragmatic measure, but an act born out of fear politics. Instead of finding a way to keep a much-needed hospital open, this board has committed $25 million over the next four years and an additional $5.1 million per year in perpetuity to support jail operations. To spend this amount to expand imprisonment instead of preventing imprisonment is a step backward. When the community steps forward and this board steps backward, an unnecessary divide is created. I beg you to walk with us and not away from us. And Chair, I know the dais can be a bully pulpit, but it does not mean you can be a bully. When someone speaks to you and you perceive disrespect, it doesn't give you license to be disrespectful back to them. I would ask you to evaluate how you approach other people. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable. And I would, I would also ask you to understand what we're doing here. You serve on the city council and you know. Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Jerry Esther, followed by Marvin Willis, followed by Martha Pass Stone.
Morning.
Good morning. First of all, I just want to thank everybody that came out against this jail expansion. You've probably seen me here a few times over the last seven, eight years. Since I'm formerly incarcerated and since I've been out of prison, I've been trying to work toward the betterment of our society. I think that if you're not part of, working toward, part of social solution, then you're part of the problem. I chose to be part of the solution. When I was in prison, it cost a stated annual, maybe $60 some thousand a house. I've been in college now for the last seven years at $33,000 a year. You're paying $60,000, or should I say 50% of what you're paying to house somebody, you could be putting somebody through college. You're building sales when you can be making tuitions, creating tax-paying citizens, dealing with safety, health issues. For the eight years, when I first started doing this, I had a lot of hope, thinking that our public officials would represent us. But time and time again, I'm up here and I'm seeing that our public officials have been up for sale. You guys have been selling off our votes. If Contra Costa is serious about changing what's going on in the streets of Richmond and other cities throughout this county, you guys will go against this jail expansion. I know that's probably won't be the thing, that's not gonna be what you do, even though right now Contra Costa is third when it comes to the level of poverty. Oh yeah, I'm also the community connection manager for Rubicon Programs. Our job is to try to help people break the cycle of poverty. Right now, Contra Costa is third. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Willis.
Melvin Willis, organizer with ACE, a Richmond City Council Person. Look, to me, what I am seeing when we're talking about this jail expansion is investment and expectations of our community. We just had many presentations on people doing great work in our community and even talking about the needs for more funds, which twenty, over twenty million dollars could be something to help fund those certain programs, but mass incarceration seems to be the direction of the board when they're talking about where priorities are at. When I look at this jail expansion, I'm looking at it that you're setting an expectation for our community. And what that expectation is, is that I'm expecting you to fail and be incarcerated, as opposed to investing in youth programs, job programs, housing programs, homeless programs, things to help develop people's critical skills, give them their basic human rights, things that are actually needed so people can actually thrive in this community. You're saying no to those things that are also essential. And when you're saying yes to a jail expansion, you're setting that expectation for people to fail. If you need more beds, have the sheriff end that contract with ICE and advocate against that. I just got a call in the middle of the night from a friend of mine. He, they got picked, their boyfriend got picked up by a patrol only because he was undocumented. He didn't do anything wrong. They just got pulled over. They found out that he was undocumented and they took him away and he's on his way to Arizona right now. Is that right that we're locking people up? They didn't do anything wrong just because of documentation status? And we're condoning that here in Contra Costa County? No. The city of Richmond, El Cerrito, and San Pablo took stances against this jail expansion because we recognize the need, that we need actual services. We need a hospital. That's where we can help treat mental health. You are setting a bad expectation for our community. Saying yes to this jail proposal is telling my community and Contra Costa County that you're expecting them to fail and be locked up, and that's wrong. Invest in services and not cells.
Thank you. Martha and Edith.
I'll be translating for Martha Pastrano.
Buenos dias.
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Martha Pastrano.
My name is Martha Pastrano.
Y solo quiero decir que los fondos para esta cárcel son imprudentes.
I just want to say that the funds that are being used for this jail expansion is imprudent.
Cuando en, in Richmond, no tenemos un hospital por falta de fondos.
When in Richmond, we do not have a hospital due to lack of funding.
Entonces, no expanden la cárcel, por favor.
So, then please do not expand the jail.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. You also filled out a speaker card. Was that just for?
Yeah, I don't know. I also filled one out. I just didn't hear it.
Oh.
Edith Pastrano with ACE and Richmond resident. I'm here today because, as everyone else is here, we're here talking out against the jail expansion. One of the reasons why I brought my mom was because she actually was hospitalized at DMC when she most needed it. And that's why she got a little shaky when she was talking about it, because we know that we don't have a local hospital in case an emergency happens to someone. And for me, that's really difficult because the closest hospital would be either Martinez, Alta Bates, or I don't know where. And the fact of the matter is that there was lack of funding for the hospital. There's lack of funding for a bunch of stuff, but there never seems to be a lack of funding for things that really don't help us. And that's why I'm here to speak out against the jail expansion. We need funding for services for youth, infrastructure, safety in the community, and overall, we just need to be paying attention to what the constituents of this county want. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Peter Danerich, followed by Nancy Yubera, followed by Judy Weatherly.
Good morning. Peter Dragovich, resident of Martinez. Regarding the proposed Detention Center expansion project, I'm opposed to that. And I'd like to quote from a letter to the editor that was published in eastcountytoday.net from Judith Tannenbaum. And it quotes Dr. Terry Cooper, psychiatrist, professor, and author of many professional articles and two books about mental illness and the correctional system. Dr. Cooper says, quote, "Individuals who go to jail with a substance abuse problem come out of jail with the same problem, whereas eighty percent of individuals who undergo recovery treatment in the community and complete their treatment programs remain clean and sober after three years. Jail is a terrible setting for individuals suffering from serious mental illness, where the harsh conditions greatly exacerbate their mental illness and worsen both their disability and their prognosis. The better quality of the therapeutic relationship, the better the quality of the therapeutic relationship with the mental health professional, the more likely individuals with serious mental illness are to adhere to their treatment, remain clean and sober, and thrive. On the other hand, in jail, they are likely to spend most of their time in a single cell by themselves and their condition is likely to deteriorate badly." Dr. Cooper said, "If Contra Costas want to help people in jail who have mental health problems, we need to implement diversion programs and other community treatments as alternatives to jail time. If you want to help people in jail who have mental health problems, we need to implement diversion programs and other community treatments as alternatives to jail time." Thank you.
Hi. My name is Judy Weatherly. I spoke at the budget hearing last month and I'm back again today to implore you to reconsider this vote that is coming up in terms of the jail expansion. I'm here because I strongly believe that the monies you are about to allocate to this project now and in the future are misdirected. The allocation of funds does not support the people of Contra Costa County, nor is this allocation of funds supported by the majority of residents of Contra Costa County. Why are we looking to expand our jails to provide mental health services when we do not have adequate mental health services in our communities? Why are we spending millions of dollars on incarceration when we know that the best way to keep people safe and not in the criminal justice system is to not let them get there in the first place? Jails are not mental health treatment centers and will never be mental health treatment centers. I retired last year after forty years working in education, social services, and mental health. I worked in community-based mental health programs, providing direct services, as well as being a clinic director of a community-based mental health clinic. I had a private practice in Richmond where my practice was primarily low-income and medical clients. I was even a substitute teacher at the West County Detention Center for a brief time. I've worked with youth involved in criminal justice system, as well as adults with involvement in the county criminal justice system, as well as people with a history of state correctional facility system experience. I have worked for Decades, trying to help people in power such as yourselves, understand that prevention is not only the most cost-effective way to respond to behavioral and mental health issues, but is certainly the most successful and the most compassionate way to address the issues people face in their lives. Here I am again, hoping and praying that at least one of you will realize that incarceration is not the answer to mental health issues. We need treatment services. We need prevention services. We need intervention. I don't know how many people have asked me, "How do I get, how does my friend get the same services I'm getting when I was doing prevention work?" What was I supposed to say? Abuse your child? Commit a crime?
Thank you.
In order to get the needed services? No, that is not the way to do this. I'm sorry, but you are misguided and misguided and I'll be glad to sit down with you for hours to talk about my experience in mental health and the reasons that incarceration is traumatic, not only for the prisoner, but for the families and the children.
Thank you, ma'am. Diane Bello and Brenda Wong. It will be followed by Linda Comar? No? There's no Diane Bello? Sandra Bae?
I think I see another council member here.
Linda?
Oh.
Who would that be, John?
Councilmember Rochelle Pardu Okimoto is here. Yes.
Okay.
I don't know if you, you have a card, Rochelle? Okay.
Okay. Do you want to come forward?
Sure.
We normally call the electeds up front. You probably didn't identify yourself as an elected, Rochelle.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. My name is Rochelle Pardu Okimoto. I'm a city council member in the city of El Cerrito. I'm also a member of the California Nurses Association. And I'm here today to hopefully put a face on services, because I know we often talk about it in this abstract way, services. But I want you to know, I'm not going to give you the regular talking points, so I hope you listen to me. I was a poor kid at one point, very impoverished, living in a car piled high with dirty clothes like they were talking about. And I lived on welfare for a while. Those were dollars well-spent. I lived eating government cheese every day. I will not touch cheese with a ten-foot pole now. Ask any of my friends, I will not touch cheddar cheese ever again. But I'm here to tell you that I'm glad that you spent that money on me. And I'm even more grateful that my grandparents took me in, the way that these foster parents did, because that helped save me. And furthermore, the state of California put money into my education, and that was money well-spent. I have paid back the state of California in the form of taxes probably ten times over. So, I ask you, if you're going to spend five million dollars a year, twenty-five million up front, invest it in these kids. Invest it in the foster care system. Invest it in mental health. Invest it in a hospital. Help people like Tammy, Ms. Anderson, take in more foster kids. Thank you.
Can I just make a quick comment? Federal, since a council member, a little quick comment. And I wanted to make a, I wanted to make a quick comment. And Rochelle, I want to note something and appreciate Rochelle's effort on this and hopefully will get rectified. I remember the day that you had the resolution before the El Cerrito City Council to oppose the jail expansion project, and I was there to support your resolution, and I appreciate that, that as, I don't want to call it retribution, but as a result of El Cerrito's action to oppose the jail expansion, the sheriff canceled the contract that had been negotiated with El Cerrito, that had been approved by the El Cerrito City Council for dispatch services for El Cerrito and Kensington residents. And I thought that was an inappropriate action by the sheriff to do that for residents in El Cerrito expressing their will through their council members. Hopefully, that will get rectified. I know some of you were at the El Cerrito NAACP discussion on Saturday, in which the sheriff's office and I were debating this issue, and the sheriff's department indicated that they had reached out to El Cerrito. They said that publicly. Hopefully, that will happen, right, Rochelle? And so, I wanted to point out, because it was a budget issue we discussed here, that for the sheriff to cancel a dispatch contract that would benefit the residents of El Cerrito, cost them less money, and also remove revenue we would have otherwise received, because you took a position, right, was inappropriate. And I appreciate that you came and spoke today.
Supervisor Anderson.
I think it's important for everyone to note that because this is not agendized, we're not supposed to be commenting on any of this. And with all due respect, if a resolution can be reached between the sheriff and El Cerrito, talking about it right now may not be the most helpful approach to that. And I think many of you who have emailed my office, I've given you my responses as to where I am on this issue. And so, again, for those of you who are watching or you don't see response from us on this issue, it's a very, very important issue to each one of us up here, and there will be an opportunity, assuming the grant is awarded formally to the county. We have early indications from the preliminary voting that we will be receiving that grant. We will have a very robust discussion about this. So, please don't accept any of our silence up here as somehow saying, "We don't care about the issues you're bringing up. We don't have any thoughts about it." We're just not able to talk about it because it's not on today's agenda.
Okay, Linda Comisar, and she will be followed by Ms. Hurley and Courtney Wisely. Linda Gore, okay?
Hi, I'm Linda Comisar, and everyone here has voiced my own sentiments as well, very I'm going to read a letter from an individual who is a resident of Oakley, though, Liz Elias. "In the first place, focusing on jails instead of education and prevention is a backwards approach. Just because the sheriff keeps coming back every couple of years with the same tired story in hopes of wearing down the resistance doesn't mean his story is correct this time either. In the second place, jail is no place for people with mental health issues. Those who are violent in their mental illness and have committed a violent crime, it's understandable, but what of those who are merely acting out and not hurting anyone? Surely, they should be remanded to the custody of a dedicated mental health facility instead of sent to a jail where they haven't broken the law. Thirdly, our county has very limited treatment facilities for mental health and rehabilitation. The county public health system has, cannot serve many of the residents. In fact, Oakley has zero mental health facilities. Fourth, the huge burden of the millions of dollars it will take to build this jail expansion is a very poor use of those funds, and there is still the matter of the perpetual ongoing cost of five million dollars, which will eventually go up in the future, and this will be each and every year for maintaining this jail. Finally, denying this grant money will free up that five million maintenance dollars per year for better services, including but not limited to mental health services for the entire population and not just for those in jail. As well as a portion of that money could be funneled into education, crime prevention, and a much more cost-effective solution, I vehemently urge a no vote on this grant."
Thank you. Karen of Walnut Creek. I didn't want to butcher your last name, so.
Savage. Hi, my name is Karen. I'm from Walnut Creek and I'm reading a letter from Brody Hilk from Danville, California. "People have told me that some of the mentally ill, especially the homeless, act out, sometimes violently, and then go to jail. That is a problem. How to get the mentally ill to take their medication to even out their possible psychotic episodes without medication? According to psychiatrist Terry Cooper's, the most important factor to keep a person taking his or her medication is their rapport with the therapist. In other words, in regular therapy with the same therapist, trust forms and the patient tends to stay on medication. This medication regime decreases the likelihood of an episode so real therapy and healing can take place. This is not going to happen in jail. There are not enough therapists and there's not the ability to see the same therapist regularly over time, seeing true healing occur. Look at the number of therapists. There will be one full-time mental health clinician and one full-time psychiatrist. That is two therapists for four hundred and sixteen men. No one will get better in jail. If people are really interested in seeing healing, they would use the twenty-five million for an in-house mental health facility where the poor and homeless, mentally ill, can get long-term care, intense therapy, and thus healing. The jail expansion has been broadcast as a facility for the mentally ill with special rooms for therapy. There are thirty-two beds for acute cases and sixty-four for detox. That is ninety-six beds. The remainder of the beds are for the general population. At twenty-five million, that's three hundred and eighty- At $25 million, that's $380,000 per bed, is a jail where there will be no healing, the best use of $25 million. Many other states have facilities outside the jail where a judge can place the person with his or her case managed by the court. Why can, why can we not build facilities like this outside the jail? Why can't we have detox beds outside the jail? They're definitely needed. Moreover, if you look at the diagram of the rooms, the unit having the 32 severely mentally ill have no group therapy or individual therapy rooms. The same goes for the detox beds. There is no evidence of therapy or individual therapy rooms for those 96 beds. If you want to help the mentally ill, we can make better use of taxpayer money. Thank you."
Thank you. This is Gillory. Courtney Wiley? No? Followed by Whitney Hershey?
Good morning, supervisors. Last time I was up here, I started crying, so I'm going to try not to do that today. I'm a high school teacher in Richmond. I really love the students that I teach. I brought two of them here today to speak to you, and I'm just going to start with a few questions, and I'm not making any assumptions, and you don't even have to answer. I just want you to think about it. First is, have any of you had to survive or recover from trauma in your own life? The second question is, have any of you worked with trauma survivors up close and personal in the course of your career? Third, have any of you worked with incarcerated people for a long time in a way that lets you get to know them personally? I am a trauma survivor. I come from a much more privileged community, but when I think about everything it took for me to heal and all the resources I had, it's really hard for me to understand how anyone could think that this would work and that a jail would be a good environment to heal in, for all the reasons that the previous speaker stated. Have you visited Rubicon? Have you visited the RISE Center? $5 million a year? That could fund five more RISE Centers for people who then won't end up in jail, for my kids. We're organized in West County. We're not organized yet in East County, but it's also hard for me to believe that if I bring the stories that I know about from my kids to the constituents in communities that are not like theirs, that they would ever think that this was a good idea, and we will be organizing. So, that's all I have to say.
I'm going to go back again to, oh, come on forward, and you are?
I'm Wendy Hershey.
Okay.
A longtime Concord resident. In the nightmare of everything that's going on in our country now, it is really hard for me to believe that my representatives want to build a new jail in my community instead of building on the services that we so desperately need. We need to offer them to people that are experiencing the most extreme meanness I've ever lived through in the United States. Bill Clinton regretted what happened when he was president. We wound up putting so many people in prison that there wasn't enough money to educate them, train them for new jobs, and increase the chances when they came out that they would live productive lives. I feel his pain, and I feel your future pain if you go ahead with this jail. My favorite teaching positions in the Mount Diablo Unified School District were in alternative high schools that had small populations, where we could make deep connections with our students and their families. One of my students found me on Facebook. "Hey Wendy, I was one of your students at CIS. I've wanted to write to you for a while and let you know you had an immense impact on my life and how I think and treat people. I grew up to not be a monster. I was a stubborn teenager then, but once I left my peer group, everything sunk in. Thank you so much for making such a difference in someone's life when you didn't have to." But he's wrong that I didn't have to. I did have to. We all have to. You have to. A majority of voters here did not approve a policy of scapegoating the most vulnerable Please don't squander our hard-earned tax dollars on a prison. You can do better.
Thank you. Alicia Kane? Alicia Kane? Followed by Sheldon Jones? Followed by Rochelle Pardue? And Harry Baker?
Good morning. My name is Alisa Kang, and I'm a community organizer with the California Nurses Association. The results of a recent survey conducted with Contra Costa County voters on their attitudes towards community reinvestment policies in Contra Costa demonstrate that voters strongly support an array of community reinvestment policies, which emphasize access to healthcare services, increased access to early education after-school programs, and employment opportunities for the most vulnerable, including communities of color, foster youth, low-income families, and the formerly incarcerated. Voters believe a preventative approach of crime is more likely to produce safety than one that emphasizes law enforcement, and they are especially supportive of investing in youth programs, mental health care, and employment opportunities for vulnerable populations. The support for reinvestment policies cuts across many major demographic groups, including all counties, gender, age, party, income level, and ethnicity. I'm just going to highlight some of the key findings. Seven in 10 voters support shifting investment from the local sheriff's department to community reinvestment policies. Three-quarters of Contra Costa County voters believe that investment in their community offers a more effective crime prevention strategy than investment in law enforcement. Voters express distinct strong preferences for specific community investments as a way of improving safety in their communities. When asked how Contra Costa County should spend money to help make their communities safer, voters expressed support for increasing programs for youth, expanding access to mental health care, increasing access to substance use treatment in communities, and job training for formerly incarcerated people and communities of color. Voters strongly prefer providing mental health care in communities rather than in jails, almost by 60%. Majority of voters would like Contra Costa County to be a sanctuary county. 60% of voters oppose federal policies that increase the detention, deportation, and criminalization of immigrants. And additionally, a majority of Contra Costa voters oppose the contract between the sheriff and the ICE department. The results of the survey indicate that Contra Costa County voters support a broad set of community reinvestment policies, and in all cases favor these approaches to community safety over investment in law enforcement. The Coalition would be more than happy to meet with all of you, to go into the survey results in more detail, and a lot of information is broken down by district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheldon Jones? He will be followed by Rochelle Pardue.
Yes, good morning. I'm a 40-year resident of Contra Costa County, a recent graduate of UC Davis in American Studies, a volunteer in Contra Costa County schools, and a retiree. I have not been that involved in the electoral political system in the past, but I'll tell you, if you vote to get this jail, you're on the wrong side of history. And that, just because, just because someone who's actually in a bit of trouble now is saying that they're going to make America great again, doesn't mean that making America great again is by voting for mass incarceration or mass deportations. And that, I believe, is the primary goal of the jail expansion. I believe, from what everyone else has said here, and all the facts and research that they've done, it's clear that the jail is an inappropriate and fiscally irresponsible place to put mental health, and therefore it has to be, people don't invest money for nothing. It has to be for something, and the thing that it's currently being, being used for are those two things, mass incarceration and deportation. And it's going to be part of the deportation force that the current commander-in-chief has noticed us that he is going to do. And so, if you vote, as I said, if you vote for this jail in its final, in your final voting, I will get much more involved in electoral voting and make sure that all my six children and 11 grandchildren know exactly where each of you voted, and why, and why their history will, their future, I'm sorry, my history, will be one of mass incarceration instead of hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Rochelle Pardue? Oh, okay. It must have been good to me.
Chairman Glover, members of the board, good morning. My name is Harry Baker. I live in Pleasant Hill. With your eyes on the absolutely deplorable conditions endured by those incarcerated with serious mental health here in Martinez, you led with your hearts February 7, when you voted to add 48 high-security cells for mentally ill offenders in the new jail facility in Richmond. You led with your hearts, but where were your heads? What were you thinking? Frankly, you were gamed. You were played. You were sold a bill of goods by the sheriff. Expansion of the jail for $95 million is not needed to achieve proper accommodation of the county's mentally ill incarcerated population. While a small number do require high-security cells, mental health care professionals have clearly established that many can and should be moved to mental health care facilities outside the jails for effective treatment. 63% of people in California's jails are awaiting trial or sentencing because they cannot afford bail. When this profoundly unjust money-bail system is reformed in California, likely by passage of Senate Bill 10, the need for jail capacity will not increase, it will decline. Furthermore, Senate Bill 54, Kevin DeLeón, passed out of the Senate to the Assembly April 3. This has been called the Sanctuary State Bill. Sheriffs argued in the Senate that it would prevent them from leasing jail space to federal immigration officials. Given the legislative and moral assault on mass incarceration that points to less need for jail capacity and questions the certainty of renting beds to ICE in the future, the ability to make use of an expanded jail is seriously in doubt. Let's pay, let's not pay for beds that we won't be able to use. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'm going to call names of individuals who did not respond earlier, and that would be Courtney Wiley.
How you doing? My name is Nancy Yarburn. I'm a community organizer with Cisco, also a resident of West County, and I'm just here to let you guys know that I'm opposed and I'm against the jail expansion. Yes, I have a brother that has a mental illness that has been in and out of incarceration for the longest, and yeah, I mean, I could tell you, it doesn't help. I mean, they don't belong in jail, and we don't, we shouldn't treat them like that, like they're criminals. It's not their fault that whatever happened to them, happened to them. And can, Ms. Anderson, I know you said that, you know, silence is like, you know, you don't want us to think that we don't, that you guys don't care, but when you guys voted in February, for you, you showed us that you didn't care about our community and our people. You showed us that. You clearly showed us that, and you can sit there with your look on your face, but at the end of the day, your kids won't be locked up. Ours will. What we need is services. I walk down my neighborhood every day, and I can see it, the misery, the lack of resources, the lack of help that we don't have, and you wonder why we going crazy in the first place?